This is Tehachapi Pod. Sit back and relax as Key, Cory, Greg, and Ashley talk about what's happening in and around Tehachapi.
It's Tehachapi Pod time. Key Budge Cory Costella today. Cory, how you doing?
I'm doing okay. How are you?
Doing good. Hey, it's council recap time. We had, we kicked off April 1st Monday of the month and we had a city council meeting.
We did. And, and so we did several things that we discussed and it was a fairly productive meeting and we had a few things that I want to just cover briefly. Important projects though, Don Marks, our public works director, discussed a clarifier rehabilitation project. Clarifiers part of the wastewater treatment plan. Everything runs through it. It does exactly what it says. It clarifies before the water is out as treated effluent. And so it's this is for our secondary clarifier. So it's kind of the backup in case something goes down. And so we're getting the backup rebuilt. And then actually when they rebuild our backup, they're going to rebuild the backup that we have now. So we'll have a backup to a backup. That makes a lot of sense.
Right.
So we awarded that contract to get that work started here soon. Put a few contingencies in place just in case the work takes a little bit longer because we do have to have a rental on standby in case we need a backup while the backup's being fixed.
Right.
And so we extended the rental contract just in case, good planning by Public Works just to make sure like the contractor does say they can get it done in a week, but just in case something happens, let's have a backup plan. So got that approved to, to get that. So that contract was awarded. And then a few from the development services department, some minor items. The drainage benefit assessment district was formed, a couple resolutions the council adopted. One to form a drainage, basically the sumps you see around town. These are all benefit assessment districts that are paid for by the property owners nearby, whether it's in a housing tract or commercial development. This is on Tatchby Boulevard by Bailey where the Tatchby mini storage and RV resort was approved.
And when we mentioned a sump, sumps where we collect all of our storm water, that runoff. So that's the, the technical term is sump.
Yes.
But for those like myself, that's that big hole over there that collects all the storm water.
Yeah. And what happens is when you develop a site, you'll get more runoff because currently the, the, on that, it's an undeveloped piece of property and you know, the water usually, most of it will saturate into the ground or case like now, sometimes there's runoff, it'll go to Tatchby Boulevard, then it gets collected in the storm system there. So this actually will address the increased runoff when they do develop that land and turning into a mini storage area and a small RV park. So yeah, that was just basically to make the assessments about 9,000 a year to be paid for by the property owners part for the maintenance on the, on the property taxes. And so the council adopted a couple of resolutions there. Also got an agreement with AECOM Technical Services just to help Caltrans when it comes to federally recognized grants for road projects and stuff. They want a sort of third party set of eyes on everything and it can't be the, the group that designed the project. It's got to be somebody else. So we're bringing AECOM in as that third set of eyes. A little more bureaucracy, but that's just what the rules are for the grant funding. So we got to follow it.
Kind of understand it though. I, when it was explained in the meeting, it made sense to me that Caltrans a part of the grant, we're going to give a lot of money. You've got a design company. They shouldn't be the ones that come back and take a look at it just to protect the money that's, that's being allocated.
Yeah. So we, so we agreed with AECOM. They've done a ton of work with us over the years. And so they had that agreement approved. And then another one that's sort of a paperwork item now. So CEQA is a California Environmental Quality Act. You gotta do it on every project or at least declare either an exemption or a negative declaration mitigated, negative declaration is sometimes it's called. So in the past, a lot of those can be done by development services, by the city engineer. You know, Jay Schlosser does that role for us. And sometimes they, the planner can say, oh yeah, this is a, this is a neg deck or this is has an exemption. They'll write their, their analysis as to why, and it's good. California changed that rule and now that we can still do that, however, the council has to sign off on the staff's recommendation that this project is exempt from CEQA. So this, in this case, it was our grind and overlay project, which we talked about for roads that's coming this summer EF and Poly Streets. It's already a road. There's not environmental impact to grinding down asphalt and putting new asphalt on top. And so we had that done. And now we have to go to council and say, okay, that, you know, we want to make sure that it's okay that we don't have CEQA. And obviously they said that was fine, but that's something new and you're going to hear more about that. It's got to go to council every time now. Not something that we had to do in the past, but that's now part of the way the game is played here in the state of California. Finally, the big item, and it's not one that is necessarily good news, but we talked about to council, we presented a resolution to oppose what is being referred to. And this is something that was, signatures were gathered and it's in the, on the desk of the attorney general right now in the state of California to get on the November 2024 ballot. It's a resolution. Actually, we were having the council sign a resolution to oppose what's being referred to as the taxpayer protection and government accountability act. That sounds good, right? Surface, doesn't it?
But every bill that is placed on the ballots, it sounds great just by title, but it is nothing to do with actually what occurs.
What was the one two years ago, like the safe schools act? And it had nothing to do with safe schools whatsoever?
Yeah. And we talk about the education and reforms in schools. And then what it is is we're letting people out of prison.
Yeah.
And closing prisons and those things would be very misleading.
Yes.
And again, we've got misleading titles to proposed ballot measures.
Yeah. So this is a, a voter referendum that was brought forward by a group called the California Business Roundtable. Even that sounds harmless enough, but what this is, the California Business Roundtable is the lobbying arm of some of the state's wealthiest corporations. They were able to pay signature gatherers to go to Walmarts and grocery stores and Costco's across the state and get enough people to believe that the government taxpayer protection and government accountability act was a good enough idea to sign their name to it saying, get it on the ballot. They tried this in 2018, had some success, didn't get on the ballot. I think they were sort of pressured not to put it forward, but they're doing it and they're pushing forward in 2024. So what does that mean? What it basically does is it redefines a lot of, let's just start on the fee side of things. So we charge a lot of fees, whether it's impact fees, you come into the city, you want to connect to our sewer system, whether you're building a home, building a business, apartment complex, or it may be, you're going to have an impact to our system. So you're going to pay into a pot of money. So one day when your impact to the system has made this system exceed what it currently is, that money's going to go to pay to expand the system. We're not asking you, the rate payer who's already been connected to pay, to pay more in rates so we can expand the system. Other agencies do it that way and they, they inherit problems years down the road. Do the same for water. We do the same for water entitlement, that sort of thing. We go out, we buy, buy water rights on your behalf, that sort of thing. We have fees for administration. So again, you're getting a building permit for a water heater in your home, something simple. You're paying the staff's time to cover that building permit. The regular taxpayer who already has a water here in their home isn't paying for it, if that makes sense.
Right.
So there's fees all over the K, all over. Every city's got them. Part of what this will do is this going, going to redefine those as taxes and they're going to have to be re-studied, re-examined, maybe eliminated altogether, taken to the voters for a vote. It's going to cost cities across the state millions of dollars just to do that part, let alone the revenue lost in fees. That's one thing. But what it really does is it's stripping out local control once again. So we passed measure S back in November. 57% of the voters in the city passed measure S, one cent sales tax increase went into effect a few days ago. You may notice it on your receipts now. It says 8.25%. All that money was slated to go towards fire, police, streets and roads, infrastructure.
Essential services.
Essential services. And it was about local control. Well, this bill is going to undo that because what this bill has a retroactive provision in it. So anyone who had a tax measure that was passed after January 1st, 2022, which measure S was one of them, as was measure K in the county of Kern, would be null and void. It would not count because we do not have a sunset date on our measure. Our measure said until ended by voters. So at any point, the voters in the city can say, you know what? We have enough money. We want to get a bunch of signatures together and put on a ballot to end the sales tax. It rarely happens, but it can be done that way. And so that's what our measure said until ended by voters, no sunset. Some measures would say this is a period of four years, but that's not, it's sometimes hard to budget that way. And it's hard to plan. It's hard to pay for essential services like police and fire on a sunset at budget and about initiative. So we didn't have a sunset. It didn't bother the voters here. 57% passed. This bill, should it go and be on the ballot and be voted in by the, by the state, would undo that one completely because we don't have a sunset. So that money would go away in December of 2024, we would lose a measure S. So your local voice, when it goes away, just like that.
So these corporate entities that have this, you know, sexy named group working for it, for its, its corporate greed has decided to, let's push something forward to overturn what the people have voted.
Yeah.
Where they want to have money in control of their local government agencies. So that's that 1% that would come directly to the city of Tehachapi. Sacramento can't touch it, can't take it away. And we can use it to benefit the people of the city of Tehachapi. These corporate entities are saying, no, no, we don't want you to have that. We're going to undo that. So that way we can save more money on our corporate bottom line.
A lot of it is they, they lumped in the sales tax along with other special taxes and fees as well, because they don't want to pay. When you're, a lot of developers, especially this list, they don't want to pay the impact fees. They'll save millions of dollars by building and making you the current taxpayer pay for the sewer system five years down the road, pay for their water system five years down the road. They're trying to create, they're reducing their own payments by creating constitutional loopholes that allow them to pay less for their fair share for the impacts on all of our local communities, including the infrastructure. And they're going to shift that burden. So they also, I mean, they can dodge enforcement for code, environmental issues. It goes down the list. So again, it was sold to people who blindly signed their name on petitions as you're going to hold the government accountable, when in fact, it's being promoted to save corporate entities, millions of dollars while stripping billions of local funding away from people like, like the city of Tehachapi who voted in their own sales tax measure. And oh, by the way, I mean, we're looking at millions in costs of legal fees to redo fees and it's, it's a backbreaker for us frankly. So the California Business Roundtable is made up of, like I said, it's a lobbying arm for some of the wealthiest corporations.
We've got, we've got a list of the names.
We've got a list of the names.
So listen to these names that Cory's going to read because we do see some of these corporate identities here locally.
Yeah.
And it's not the local franchisee. So we'll say, we'll say that. So when we hear these corporate names, it's not the local franchisee. It's at the corporate level. They're looking at the bottom line, you know, and how much profit they can turn each quarter. And they're going to do it on our backs, the taxpayer.
Yeah. And we had a couple of council members last night after I read the list say, well, I'm not shopping there. I'm not doing business here. That's on you. But I just want to throw this out there. So people understand who's behind things like this. We have Era Energy, have a big presence in the San Juanquin Valley, Albertsons, Altria, Anthem Blue Cross Automobiles Club of Southern California, you know, referred to a lot as AAA, Enterprise Rent a Car, Blackstone, Caruso Management, Chevron, CJ Seggerstrom and Sons, Dart Container, DLA Piper, Douglas Emmett, Eli Lilly and Company, Exxon, Farmers Insurance Group, Five Point, Global Medical Response Solution, Grimway Farms, Irvine Company, KB Homes, Kilroy Realty, Lovato Law, Majestic Realty, Marathon Petroleum Corp., McKinsey and Company, National Core, Pepsi, PHRMA, Sempra Energy, State Farm, Sutter Health, Union Pacific Railroad, United Airlines, UPS, Valero, Western National Group, Wells Fargo, and Well Point Insurance. So a lot of familiar names in those, in that list. These are the folks that are backing it. And on top of that, they have increased their war chest from 2018, which was roughly $6 million to over $15 million for the 2024 campaign. Now we're working and, and the city of Tatchby is the first in Kern County. I'm sure the Kern County Board of Supervisors is going to do the same because of their impacts of measure K and their own fees as well. We're working with the League of California Cities who brought this to our attention. It's an organization we're involved with. Every city in California pretty much is a member of the league and the League of California Cities has their own legislative arm who's trying to get all these resolutions together from city councils across the state to where they can then go to the California Business Roundtable and say, look, all these cities are opposing you. You're going to lose, you're going to lose and you're going to lose all this money campaigning for something that is a terrible idea because it strips away local control. So that's where we're at. And that's where the council's at to, to make that resolution that they made in the meeting. I want to real quick, some major provisions, just in a nutshell of what this bill would mean if it is passed by, by the voters. This is not a state legislature thing. Usually when we talk about some Sacramento, yeah, it's, it's the state legislature and they're voting this and that. This is actually coming from a voter referendum due to sort of a pressure by corporate entities who have great marketing teams and they canvass the streets and they're able to get people believing, because when you sign a petition, all your petition has is a short, just short description of what it is up top. It's like three lines, a brief summary. Now usually the full bill and the full provisions are in the back, but it's 15 pages long and no one's going to read that as they're walking in to buy some groceries.
Filled with pork.
Right. And so they just sort of ignore it and they just sign because the title sounds really good. I'm going to hold the government accountable and I'm going to protect me the taxpayer.
I'm going to pay less taxes.
Right. I'm going to pay less taxes. When in the end, you're going to pay a lot more covering all the costs. You're going to receive a lot fewer services. So here the major provisions is just to get this out there. Taxes and fees adopted after January 1st, 2022, that do not comply with the new rules are void unless reenacted, including measure S in the city of Tatchby. So we'd have to go back to the voters in 2026. So we'd have to go two years without this revenue and say, okay, we want to do this all over again, and we need to put a sunset on it this time. So we can only do it for five years, six years or maybe. So it'll be a constant recurring cost to try to get this thing passed by voters. It invalidates the upland decision that allows a majority of local voters to pass special taxes that we just had. This measure specifies that taxes proposed by the initiative are subject to the same rules as taxes placed on the ballot by a city council. What, what that is, is you, there's a provision right now in the law that allows you, the general public, that says, for example, I want to build, we'll use pickleball courts example, right? For, it's key's language, right? And a bunch of people came to go to say, we want to build pickleball courts in Tehachapi. And the city maybe says, well, we don't have the funding for that. And they say, that's fine. We're going to put together a coalition and we're going to get enough signatures to qualify this for the ballot. It would be a special tax. So we want to do a special pickleball tax to get these facilities built. Since it's for a specific cause, normally that would require a two thirds majority. Say if our city council put that on the agenda and they said, that's why with measure S, we were very broad in what it would go to, because if you go to specifics, it requires a two thirds majority. So normally if the city council say, we want to build pickleball courts, we want to do a special tax for that, it would require two thirds majority. However, this provision allows voter, local groups to bring specific measures forward and only get a simple majority. So that is your, you know, 50% plus one. That would wipe that away. So that would be no longer allowable. So stripping even more local control away from just voting blocks and community organizations that were, would like to bring forward something like that, that would no longer be allowed. New taxes can only be imposed for a specific time period. That's the sunset I talked about. We can't amend our city charter to include a tax or fee. So we can't try to go the alleged, that sort of code route. So we can't go around it that way. All state taxes require majority voter approval, which this is probably one of the reasons why this was brought forward because sometimes we all look at each other and go, how did that get passed? We don't remember voting for that. And so I think of all the provisions of this, that one makes some sense. And that's probably what the sort of main target of this was. However, they couldn't just target the state's definition of a tax without taxing everybody's definition of a tax. So all of us cities got lumped into this and it's really killing the local, the local angle. While I think they might've been targeting Sacramento, especially if you're talking about some of these giant corporations, Grimway, Chevron, who don't want to pay any fees, that might've been who they were going after to reduce their own bottom line. But at the same time, they're sucking up the local municipalities in the process. We, we can't exceed actual costs for providing a product or service for which the fee is charged. We do that anyway. Now anytime we have a fee, we have to have a study. So whether it's a, like parks impact fee, for example, you building a city on a residential side, you pay an impact fee to parks unless your development is already building a park, but you still will pay into that a little bit for regional parks, like even Bright Lake is, even though it's outside of the city, it's a regional park. And so we'll pay into some, some of those funds. We have to do a study, creates a nexus between that money and, and where's it's going to go? What do we think the cost of the project will be? Every few years, we have to file a report that says, yep, we collect this much money. We didn't do anything this year, but the year we do something, we say, okay, we built a bathroom at Central Park and we use this money because that was in our fee study. And so we have to do it that way. And we do this for every fee go down the list. However, now the burden to prove that a fee or charge doesn't exceed the actual cost is changed to what they call clear and convincing evidence. So now we have to somehow figure out, not just based on an estimate by a, a financial firm or a company, we have to somehow come up with clear and convincing evidence that the cost of the bathroom at Central Park is not going to be more than the fee that we're collecting, if that makes sense. And the small percentage of that home or whatever may be paying into it. That's going to cost millions alone, just in this city to redo all those studies. And the same with our, our, we call them, we, they're, if they want to use the government property or our encroachment permits. So let's say it's a utility company and they need to close the sidewalk. We have an encroachment permit. It's very minimal, but it's just more so they have to come in, let us know what they're doing. And I don't know, they could chart the costs of what it is to close the sidewalk for the day and 50 bucks or something like that. Just depends. Now you'd have to basically, we can charge a reasonable amount. Well, now we can't be reasonable anymore. We have to provide clear and convincing evidence that he, that, that this is, we are not being unreasonable. If that makes any sense. Again, going to cost hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. So that one is, that's a big one. Those are all kind of the main areas. Other things that would go away or be impacted are nuisance abatement charges. So weed abatement, we have a, we have all sorts of rules regarding yard maintenance and trash and stuff. The police department uses that to keep the city clean, to keep your neighborhoods from deteriorating. Those would really, those would go away. Code enforcement, neighborhood cleanups, those would go away. You would not, your burden to find somebody on a nuisance would be off the charts and the police department just wouldn't do it anymore. Franchise fees that we charge to people like WM, AT&amp;T, Ray's Spectrum for using, you know, using the public right of way to provide their services would go away as well. And that money goes under the general fund to use for maintenance and that sort of thing. That would most likely go away. Emergency response fees. We don't have a ton of these, but say, for example, somebody and they use this specifically, they get a DUI and maybe their DUI, they actually crashed their car and they destroyed some public property in the process. Or the emergency response was kind of above and beyond because somebody, you know, did something really stupid. And we, usually you can recover some of those costs. You would not be allowed to recover those costs anymore. So again, taxpayers not being protected, you're actually being exposed even further. Document processing and duplication fees. Now, these are minimal, but what happens is sometimes somebody comes in, does a public records request and says, I want to see, I don't know, what is all the, you know, everything you can release on either this project or this issue. Well, sometimes there's volumes and volumes of these and, and that way. So someone's not sitting around the copier all day, making copies on the public's dime. They pay for that duplication service. That would, that would go away. So city clerks, not so much in Tehachapi, but all over the state would be inundated with giant binders worth of requests and they wouldn't be able to charge to get that money back. So you, the taxpayer would be paying their time to basically be a copy machine all day. Facility use charges, fees for parks and rec services, the garbage and recycling disposal fees that are recovered from the landfill, those would go away as well, which means you, the rate payer would have to pay more. So it's, it's crazy. We'd have to regularly adopt increases to fee rates and charges, revise those schedules. It's an amazing undertaking. Also our water sewer impact fees, franchise fees, entitlement fees for water, traffic mitigation fees. That's a big one. You want to build Walmart, for example. We, any big project, you study the traffic. And what they do is the engineers come in and say, okay, this sort of development was going to, whether it's homes or a business, going to generate estimated this many cars a day on the roads. That is impacting the roads. So because of the miles to being traveled to and from this location, you're being charged this much to either help expand the capacity of the road, or one day you're going to pay into a portion of expanding the capacity of the road when the time is right. That would go away. You would not even be allowed to charge the traffic mitigation fee at all based on vehicle miles traveled on a project as part of provisions of this law. That was a crazy one because you have certain groups and I can see maybe why an Albertsons is on the list, because when they build a new grocery store, they have a lot of impact and they pay a lot of traffic impact fees because a lot of traffic occurs around grocery stores. They get away with not paying that at all. That saves them millions of dollars a year. So I can see where their sort of end game is in this. Police civic facility fees, that would be impacted. Parks fees, code enforcement, chronic nuisance, and even planning review fees. So rather than being, being paid by the developer, the property owner, or the offending party, the impact of these services would fall on the existing rate payers and taxpayers to fund the service. Doesn't sound like a lot of protection to me. I don't know. I mean.
It's exposure.
Like I tell people all the time, I'm half a moron and I understand this is not taxpayer protection whatsoever.
I mean, it's the exact opposite. It's exposing you to more taxes and fees that you're going to have to pay because of the undoing of things that make government work and to make it fair and balanced.
Yeah.
And for those that are going to develop and build, they need to pay their way. They should not get a free pass just because they're at the top end of the corporate financial ladder.
Yeah. And I'll use a good, I'll use a good example, just locally, just to show that out. And it wasn't really, you know, you think about, Key, I know you live in Bear Valley and you pay a lot of money for water and if you're on sewer and they're small sewer system, but especially water, pay a lot of money for your water. Part of that was due to the fact that for years, all the new homes that were being built there, we're not paying a water connection impact fee. So what happened is when the system got overburdened, they went, oh my goodness, we can't handle the amount of people on the system. They went to you, the rate payer and said, it's no fault of the people that are in power now. They inherited this sort of bad policy. And then they, only thing they could do was to say, shoot, we have to go back to you, the rate payer. Hey, we need to charge you more because we need to build the system, you know, and build it more robust. So you, the current rate payer had to pay for the impact of others. We avoid that in the city and most cities try to do that by charging the impact fees at the time. So this would basically make it so you, the current rate payer are going to pay. And the answer might be for some folks, well, that's easy. We'll just stop building. The state of California says that's not going to happen. We're supposed to approve almost anything that comes through the door within reason because of the quote unquote housing shortage in the state. So we couldn't just say, okay, we're just not going to approve these developments. We would have to, and then on top of that, not even get paid for the impact they have to our services. So we're looking right now, reductions on the local government tax revenues have impacted, the impact on core services and infrastructure. So we're looking at fire, emergency response, law enforcement, streets and roads, drinking water, sewer parks, libraries, and homeless prevention. We're impacting. So first of all, take measure S off the table. That would be $4 million estimated wiped out right away, December of 24. This thing gets voted in, certified by the, by the, the state, 30 days after the election. So it'll be December of 24. That would go away. So we're talking unfilled police vacancies, inability to provide the compensation, competitive compensation for our dispatchers, can't pay our fire contract with Kern County Fire, loss of additional road maintenance funds. In addition, we're looking at impacting staffing and other departments as a reduction in fees result in a slower turnaround time for permits. Cause we're not getting their, a lot of what the development services team does is paid for by the people that come in to develop. They're actually getting the money back. So it's sort of paying for itself by the developer. Well, if that money then has to come out of the general fund, that's going to be less people working there, which means your permit's going to take a lot longer. The estimated impact there, probably about half a million a year. Then water, wastewater, traffic, water entitlement, those fees, probably another million annually. Of course then we'd have to do a new level of proof, that clear and convincing evidence. So that's more legislation we're exposed, more litigation we're exposed to. That's also more administrative fees that have more scrutiny and more costs to, to implement. So 100,000s of a year in legal and additional studies. So we're estimating that the taxpayer protection and government accountability act would take an estimated five to six million annually away from the city of Tehachapi. Look at our budget online with or without measure S, we don't have a lot of five to $6 million to cut out of the budget. This would absolutely do that. It is, it was promoted as something to get people to sign a sheet. And now it's been submitted to the attorney general's office as this great savior for the taxpayer. And unfortunately it's going to be a huge burden on the taxpayer because our budget is all taxpayer money. We don't generate revenue. It comes from the taxpayer. So how does the city provide services other than to charge the taxpayer more? And that's what this is going to end up doing. So that's why the League of California Cities wanted the opposition letter from the, first one, opposition later, letter from the mayor, also a, a full on resolution to oppose this. And hopefully, and we will see other cities joining on board shortly. And they're trying to push this thing away. So a lot to unpack on this deal. But it is certainly something that is a kind of a crisis moment, to be frank.
What's the name of the group that's heading this up again?
The California Business Roundtable.
Okay. And the name of this piece of proposed legislation or proposed.
It's a change in the state constitution is what it effectively becomes. It becomes a state, a change in the state constitution. This is the taxpayer protection and government accountability act. Doesn't have like a, doesn't have a number yet because we're not that far along on the 2024 election process to say it's going to be proposition, you know? election process to say it's going to be proposition, you know, one or whatever. They haven't got to that point yet. Right now, it's just known as its initiative number, and this sort of taxpayer accountability and our taxpayer protection and government accountability act.
So it's really the taxpayer exposure and government crippling, local government crippling act.
Yeah, it takes all the local control that we preached about and talked about during the Measure S. It goes away completely.
You know, when we look at Measure S and what we talked about with essential services and the things that this will undo and impact, it'll have a huge negative impact. It's one thing that we're looking at now with future costs and trying to plan ahead. And we identified Measure S, brought it to the taxpayer, the city of Tehachapi taxpayer, and the county of Kern taxpayer said, yes, we need to keep that 1% locally, so we can have these essential services. Now, this corporate greed has, wants to undo what the taxpayer wanted to do on a local basis. And this is going to be voted on, on a statewide basis. That's, that's not like we're just talking about, hey, it's going to be here for Tehachapi, and we're going to decide. This is going to be a statewide vote. And we know how some of these other communities, they just, they read a title, oh, okay, I'm going to vote yes on that. And that will cripple small communities like us.
It'll also create so much more bureaucracy and more necessity for elections. For example, when we annex a property, we know that very often, but we're actually, there's been several meetings about, and they're going to the process, which is what the, the south, northwest corner of Tucker and Red Apple, it's currently in the county of Kern, that's being annexed into the city. We would then have to go to a vote. Now, currently, the property owner says, yeah, I want to annex. Yes, I'm going to pay all local applicable taxes, sales tax, whatever it is in the future. When I join the city, I'll connect to the system, all that thing. We'd have to go to the voters in the city to say, is it okay that we tax them the same way we're taxing you? If someone builds a new hotel for the transient occupancy tax, the TOT, the hotel tax, or bed tax, as people refer to it as, we just had one open up, right? Town Play Suites opened up, they got put on the TOT, and we charged them, and then they pay that tax to basically offset the impact of tourism. We would then have to go to a vote to say, hey, somebody wants to build a new Holiday Inn. Should we charge them the same amount we're charging every other hotel? So the impact of us constantly going through these election cycles is going to be ridiculous and costly on top of everything else. Money we're never going to recover. There were 106 measures in June, a nonspecific measures that, that were passed that are in jeopardy. Not so it's not just Measure S or Measure K from the county of Kern. There was a lot of stuff, and they passed pretty overwhelmingly. I mean, in the city, we passed 57%. But we're looking at some of these areas where, I mean, in the city of Oakland, they passed a tax by 71% of the voters voted on what they called them a business general tax, their measure T. 71% of the voters said yes. And they would undo something like that. I mean, you're talking about a statewide vote to rap, to basically overrule a, a 106 cities and counties in the, in the state, that the voters said, yes, I want to keep this local control and please, you know, take this money and use it for police and fire and whatnot. So all of this stuff would go away. So it's crazy to think that a statewide initiative could wipe out the results of 106 cities and counties that said, hey, we want to do this. I mean, you throw out some of the things, you know, looking at, let's see, city of Clovis did one. They did a transient occupancy tax increase from 2% to 12%. Big jump, right? But Clovis is a booming area, and they have a lot of impact to their tourism and the business community. They, they passed that by 70% said yes. Didn't need a two thirds and got it. That would go away, because there's no sunset on that tax. So it's crazy. How many people, how many things go down this list? Anything this last year would be wiped out retroactively. So we're not even talking about moving forward, these are the rules. It's like scoring points, and then someone coming back and saying, you know what, that touchdown doesn't count two years later. I mean, we had, sorry, I know that, I know that you won the Super Bowl, but you know what, those two touchdowns, that we changed the goalpost. So move the goal back 15 yards. So technically, you were down at the two yard line. So, you know, you no longer, you no longer a winner. That's basically what they're doing. It's insane to think that that's even possible.
Yeah, it's, it is mind numbing, and the fact that they're looking at it retroactively. Yeah. It's not that they want to say, hey, going forward, we want to do this. We want to go retroactive and move the clock back. And it's, again, it's those corporate entities, it's that are behind it and have created, and when you talk about the war chest, that's the amount of money they have to help push this, you know, in the face and continue to mislead what it actually represents. And I think that's why we're having this discussion today as we do our council recap. But we want you to understand what's coming. And it's already, they've already got the signatures, and we'll see this in some fashion in November of 2024. So if, are we asking the listener, those that are listening, to reach out to this corporate entity or to this group that heads, that's got this sexy name for the, for these entities? Because it's not about reaching out to your local senator or assemblyman. This is something that the, that people have been misled to sign in petitions, using names that really are not associated with what they're trying to do.
Yeah, I think it's more so just an education piece right now, because a lot of that sort of reaching out to the California Business Roundtable is being handled by the, you know, the, the League of California cities is basically saying, look, the city councils who are duly elected by the voters in their cities, county boards of supervisors saying, same thing, duly elected by the people in their counties. If they all come out and oppose this, they're basically trying to send the message to this group that, look, all these people duly elected by their constituents are against this, hence their constituents, constituents in theory are against this. This is a bad idea to move forward, and you should rescind this. That's kind of the goal. And I think that probably shows more of a united front. I don't know how much this group listens to one or two people, but that's sort of the push right now. And that's why the city council did what they did last night. Now, the further step is just education. Like, we want you to know what this actually says. You can go to our website and go to last night's agenda, the agenda packet. My staff report is in there. It's very thorough. And, and a lot of this comes from the League of California Cities, some of their stuff's included. The actual bill text that is being proposed by the California Business Roundtable is included as well. And you can see the things they scratched out and added and changed wording and all that stuff's there, too. So a lot of this is just to let people know. Again, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. And if the word taxpayer protection and government accountability pops up, that sounds great. Like, that sounds good to me. You know, it's probably too good to be true.
But it's really exposing us as taxpayers on an individual basis to feed more costs down the road.
Yeah, because more your costs are going to go to administration as opposed to going towards streets and roads and police, fire, that sort of thing. Your core services are being impacted by the fact that, you know, you can't, you can't charge somebody coming in to build a new apartment complex, their fair share for the impact they're going to have to the system and the administration.
And this, this is not a scare tactic that we're trying to push forward. We're talking about a real, you know, set of documents that has been, you know, in my eyes, falsely represented to people to sign a petition to get it on the ballot.
And so this is impacting our business even right now. So Measure S was passed, we just started, you know, collecting a few days ago, April 1st, it went into effect. You know, we're in the budgeting process right now for 2023, 24, our fiscal year, which starts July 1. I literally, when this came down, because I heard about this about a month ago, and I went to the California Business Roundtable, because I was at a League of California Cities function. So I went, and I heard about this. So I went to the California Business Roundtable website, and it said, this measure will not impact a local jurisdiction's ability to pass a general tax. And that's what our sales tax measure is. I said, okay, so I think we're good. And then the, the truth came out, that no, retroactively, they're trying to wipe out those of you who already did it in the last year. So that became kind of, like I said, it was a small crisis. I went into the fight to Ahmaud Jones, our Finance Director's office, and I said, stop the press, you know, we have to budget differently, because even though we weren't planning on using a lot of Measure S funds in the next budget, because we just frankly don't have them yet, because we just started a few days ago, and the budget starts in, in Jan, in July. So we're being smart. We don't want to count on money that we don't really know is going to be there. We're not the state. We're not going to budget on some crazy pie in the sky. Oh, we think we're going to make this many millions, so we're going to go ahead and put that. But that's, that's not how we roll.
Not working.
It's not smart. Yeah, you don't speculate. So we basically said, okay, what do we do now? Because if this thing gets on the ballot, and it's being voted on in November of 2024, it gets certified in December of 24, it goes away. And so basically, like, we won't have to quote, give the money back, but then what do we do now? So we don't want to budget long term using these funds, and then have it go away. So we have to right now pause, even on some of our Measure S funding, and say, and there's so plenty we're going to fund, but we can't long term plan right now with some of these, using this money. We don't know what the future holds. So we're being smart. We're basically holding this in a separate account, and it's going to sit there until we have more clarity on what this is going to mean for us. Maybe certain provisions of the bill will be removed before it goes to the ballot. Maybe it will not be on the ballot altogether. Maybe the Attorney General finds something that is not legal. I hope so, but I'm not counting on it. So for the time being, the message to listeners is, look, we're not going to be able to turn around and make a big splash on a lot of things, you know, and pave the, pave every road in town, because we don't know what's going on with Measure S right now. We don't know where that money's going to be. So we have to basically be responsible and sit on it for a little while. So it's a bummer, because we wanted to start really, and we're going to do some more stuff, believe me. We're going to be able to use a little bit of this, but we cannot use a long term plan to hire a lot more additional police officers, because we don't, for those funding for those positions goes away, we're in bad shape.
Yeah. There's, my gosh, it's, you know, and I've said this in the past, when I've looked at some of these bills that impact, you know, law enforcement greatly, and they try and, you know, it's the title does not meet what's in the substance. And we had, you know, you said you heard about this a month ago. Actually, we had heard about this, you know, leading up to the election.
In 2018, they tried, they tried previously in a similar measure, but not as deep.
Yeah, they were trying to bring it back to life. And I know that there was, you know, some of our looked officials were actually discussing, hey, this is what is trying to
If we don't do it now, you may never get to do it.
Right. And then now they came in with the retroactive piece, too, to undo this. It's just, it's mind numbing, because we want to make sure we've got control of our own tax dollar.
Yeah. And what, and what this says is somebody in San Francisco gets the vote on the future of the funding in the city of Tehachapi. That's insane, that somebody who lives in Reading, California, is going to vote on the future taxation in the city of Tehachapi. That's nuts. I mean, like I said, the state provision, that's a statewide decision that we should all make. I get that. But why do I in Tehachapi get to vote on what they do with their money in, you know, Mont, in Montrose or whatever, like
They have different needs. Whatever, each community has different needs.
I have no say on what happens in the city of Oakland. I should not be voting on the future of the city of Oakland. That's not why, it's why I don't live in Oakland.
Right.
So, a lot of other reasons, but that's one of the reasons why I don't live in Oakland. So yeah, that's the crazy part, is, is we have this, it's, it sets up this very weird sort of, why do I get to make the decision on local funding? And I, that happens a lot with laws in general, statewide laws. But to dive into the budget impact on a, on a community that's 300 miles away, up, up the coast, I have no say in that. But this is going to allow everybody to vote on everyone else's funding. It's crazy.
It makes no sense. But we are in California. So I mean, that's, that says quite a bit.
Yeah. So anyway, it's a, you know, it, we, we did a lot of education during Measure S, getting the word out. We're doing a lot of education now. And frankly, I brought this up to the council yesterday evening. It's, this is another fight, but this is a fight worth having. I really wish one day I could go to work and not have to go, go into a fight. But it's a fight worth having. It's, and it's a fight that we're going to fight, because us and a bunch of other cities statewide, I hope every city statewide is on the same page.
Well, as I looked at that list, you know, there's a lot of corporations that are, some are based here in Kern County. I mean, some do business here, but some have corporate, you know, headquarters here, you know. And my question is, why are you screwing your community?
Yeah. It comes out, it comes out a lot of money. Even these, some of these companies on here that are renewable energy companies, they don't want to have to, you know, they were, a lot of them dealing with some exemptions and not paying certain fees. But if they, you know, example, in the county of Kern, you build a solar project, and you put battery storage on that project, that's considered an improvement, and you pay, you pay a tax to the county for the improved project. It changes the way the land's assessed. They don't want to pay those, right? They want to generate the power, and they want to put it on the grid, they want to sell it. They don't want to pay for their impact they're having to the community. And so that's where it comes down to.
Yeah. All right. Well, we can, we could kind of keep going on about this. But at least you understand that what we're looking at, we're looking to the future, we're paying attention to what's going on, and we're trying to give you the information as we see it. We've got the full documents to share, so that way you can do your own research, come to your own conclusion. If, you know, if we're not correct in this assessment, okay, but we're going to provide you with the information versus just a title, and say, please sign here. And then when you know, when you get the, your ballot in November of 2024, all you're going to see is that sexy title, yes or no.
Yeah. And please read your materials. And I've said this in the past, too, please, I don't, I don't sign petitions in front of grocery stores. These are paid petition, they're, they're paid by the signature. They have no idea what they're even asking people to sign, because they're being paid to just do a job. And, and I, and I just, I always say, I, my response is always, I don't sign grocery store petitions. And I go about my day. I'm there to buy bread, not change the world. So that's why I have one task, which is to buy groceries. And my task is not to get involved in a cause that I saw on the top of a piece of paper. So.
Yep. Okay. I'm shaking my head. I mean, as I say this, I am literally shaking my head with disbelief. I shouldn't, because these things occur every election cycle. But I think the fact that we're looking at this retroactive piece to take it away for what the voter said yes to, you know, to a self tax, and now they're saying, no.
Yeah. And it's Not good enough. Do it over.
Right. Yeah. All right, folks. Okay, we, we, it was the city council meeting. I mean, I think Cory, we probably spoke as long
As it is the meeting.
As we did for the, with the meeting with this, just to kind of recap that.
Yes, sorry.
So I think, folks, you got to attend the April 3 city council meeting replay.
That was kind of a replay.
It was kind of the, our reintroduction.
But it's all on our website, on the Agenda Center, liveuptachapi.com. And the agenda wasn't very long, as I mentioned, and it was item number nine of the agenda. You click on that, and you'll get all the materials, you know, the staff report, and all that stuff is there with all the details from the League of California Cities, from the California Business Roundtable, all that stuff's there. So.
Okay. All right. If you have a question about what we've talked about, or if you want a little more clarity, or you've got something you'd like to share, please send it to media@tehachapi cityhall.com. And of course, if you want to, you could probably share this podcast with some of those corporate identities that were listed.
Yeah, exactly.
Because I'm sure we'll have another discussion about it down the road, as we continue to educate people, and just share the information of what's available. Make sure people understand because of the massive impact it'll have here in Kern County, and the city of Tehachapi specifically. All right. Well, Cory, thank you for doing all the research. You did a ton of work on that. Appreciate all the time and effort and trying to make sure that we understand it at a base level, and just kind of filtering through, you know, what this PR company has done representing these, these corporate identities. So thank you for that.
All right.
All right, folks. Again, media@tehachapi-cityhall.com. We appreciate the time you spend with us, and we'll catch again real soon here on TehachapiPod.
TehachapiPod is a conversation about Tehachapi, featuring the community members who make this such a special place to call home. If you have a question or a thought you'd like to share, email media@tehachapi-cityhall.com. Thank you to Gary Mazzola for sharing his song, This Is Tehachapi.